It is April 14th, 2022 at 6:00 PM and I will call to order the Free Town Board of Selectment meeting. Today in attendance, we have Town Administrator Deborah Pettie, Board of Selectment member Carlos Lopes, myself, Chairman of the Board Trevor Matthews, and Attorney George Pucci. Selectmen Jared Zager was not able to attend, he had a family medical emergency. So with that, I'll kick off the meeting. The purpose of this meeting is to announce a settlement agreement between the Town of Free Town and Excel Recycling over disputes arising from Excel's junk license dealer, license and related to cease and desist orders from both the previous board and building questions and comments from residents for a maximum of one hour. Each person will be required to approach the microphone and state their name and address. Each person will have a three minutes to speak and if you are disruptive, you will be asked to leave. So this litigation goes back to 2017 and it has involved several lawsuits following the previous board's decision on Excel renewal application denial. This included Bristol County Superior Court, Mass Land Court, and the Mass Appeals Court. Please no phone calls. Regardless of the outcome of the court, the courts have been unwilling to order Excel to cease and desist operations. This has led to a situation where while litigation is pending, Excel can operate with no local restrictions at all. The Court of Appeals latest decision called for a remand hearing. This would be a public hearing on Excel's license application followed by a vote of the board. We also have the option to negotiate a settlement via mediation. Both parties agreed to this approach given there has already been many hours of public hearings and no material facts have changed for that particular case or series of cases. Mediation took place with retired Superior Court Judge Armin Fernandez. There were two formal sessions followed by additional counter proposals considered by the board and executive session. The board voted two to one to settle the pending litigation with Excel Recycling over Excel's junk dealer license. The terms of the agreement that provide Excel a junk dealer license are as follows. The hours of operations, so shredder operations will be allowed 7:00 AM to 5:30 PM Monday through Friday. 8:00 AM to 1:00 PM Saturday for the maximum of 18 Saturdays a year and requiring 24-hour notice to the town administrator. There will be no operation on Sunday, New Year's Eve, Memorial Day, July 4th, Labor Day, Thanksgiving, and Christmas. Scale operation and material deliveries will be allowed from 7:00 AM to 6:00 PM. There are no restrictions on office admin operations, non-fairness plant operations, maintenance activities, and any non-shredding activities that are not unduly noisome. Additional noise and visual mitigation. So there will be pending approval from the building, from the building department, a third row of shipping containers. They will, Excel will plant a row of Abervites if permitted by the residents along Alexander Drive. There also will be a hotline for complaints that is being required to be manned 24/7 and there will be a policy to record the calls and investigate and address reported issues. Financial considerations. The town will be receiving 75 cents a ton, increasing five cents a year every two years, sorry, sorry, increasing five percent every two years with a cap of $1.50 a ton. In addition, there will be a gift of $25,000 a year to the town. Also, a new sign for the Campanelli Industrial Park will be paid for and sold by Excel. Now, I understand there are folks who will be upset with the board's decision to settle these pending lawsuits. The board has inherited a situation, this situation due to the unintended consequences of decisions made in the past. I think the decision to invite Excel into town with open arms without performing proper due diligence of what they actually do, as well as the decision to allow a subdivision to be built abutting an industrial zone are equally to be blamed. I think these decisions were made with the best intentions, they obviously did not pan out as planned. Unfortunately, we cannot go back in time. From my perspective, we had two options here. Continue the costly and fruitless litigation while Excel is able to operate with no local restrictions at all, or negotiate an agreement that will put in restrictions Excel can now be held accountable to, end expensive litigation, and provide resources that will help mitigate their impact. And there's some specific things I want to address. So this agreement is specific to the junk dealers license issue and does not prevent the town from taking action related to environmental issues or health issues. This does not preclude individuals from pursuing legal action on their own. Violations of terms of this agreement will be grounds to deny future license renewal requests. This will provide the town the legal standing to defend its decision and this is something we currently do not have. The town has spent over a quarter million dollars fighting this case so far. Without this a settlement, there is no end in sight. Also, so financial consideration included in the settlement between the Town of Free Town and Excel is common practice and is useful in situations like this. While the board has the ability to allocate this money as they choose, I will be personally advocating for this money to be used to mitigate the impact of Excel's operations for the folks on Alexander Drive and High Street. This can be used to fund things such as soundproof window replacement programs, yard cleaning, and air quality sensors. So that is my prepared statement. Like I said before, we will now be taking questions and comments. Please address the comments to me. I will then be kicking those to the other folks if required. You have a three-minute limit and it's for town residents only. Thank you.
Thank you, Erica Ferrer, 33B, High Street. I'm wondering if the DEP was involved in the review of theurbh or the terms and conditions if they're aware that this has happened?
Thank you. So they were not directly involved with this? Now, Excel does have a license through DEP as well. They are, well, all the restrictions we have go further than the DEP's restrictions. They're able to operate from I think 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM and any Saturday they want. So yeah, so they were, George, we didn't work with DEP specifically on this? No.
I just ask because to the best of my knowledge, in 2016, there was an agreement between a group of residents in the area and Excel which involved the DEP which outlined very specific terms and conditions in regards to operating hours, conditions, air quality, things like that, sound mitigation, what happens if those things are in excess. And then I also have another DEP document from 2017, October, which restructures the operating hours to 8:00 to 5:00 PM Monday through Friday with no shredder operations on Saturdays. It does list a few holidays and says no Sundays at all. As far as I know, this was the last document that was agreed upon by both Excel Recycling and the DEP. The town was not involved in this, so I'm wondering if what the town agreed to supersedes the DEP's expectations from October 2017.
Attorney Pucci?
Through the Chair, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I'm George Pucci from KP Law. I was counsel for Free, for the town on this case through the Board of Selectment. The agreement reached between the Board of Selectment and Excel would not supersede any other agreement that was reached, either an agreement that you referenced, if there is one between residents and Excel, that would not be affected by the town's agreement. And the town's agreement would not, in no way supersede anything in the DEP air permit. So whatever is in effect with DEP is still in effect to the extent the board has more restrictive conditions in their agreement. The air permit subjects Excel to local conditions that are more restrictive.
I was just referring to the operating hours. It sounds like this agreement extends the hours to what was supposed to be?
I'm not sure. Deb, I thought you said that the hours were to 9:00 PM on?
So the DEP has stated to me that the license that they have for the shredder, they're allowed to operate from 7:00 AM to 9:00 PM Monday through Friday and on every Saturday from 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM. And I did confirm that with the DEP today.
Okay, in 2016, those hours were reduced and then again reduced. This says administrative consent order with penalty and notice of non-compliance and it is Program ID number 572194. I haven't looked at this in a very long time. I had 10 minutes to find it. I don't know if there's been an update, but I was just wondering if the DEP was involved and it sounds like this agreement has already happened.
Correct.
Happened and you're just announcing the details?
Correct.
Check, can I just, can I just say something? So I, the DEP was not involved in this decision, but they, we have been having meetings with the DEP since I've been in office, which is only seven months, but I've had at least three meetings with the DEP and many people to discuss Excel and their operations. So while they weren't party to this, to the settlement, they definitely know what's going on in Free Town with the shredder.
Trevor, can I just add to?
Yes, please.
Just to clarify too, I don't know what document you're looking at, but my understanding was the DEP air permit has to 9:00 PM for their hours of operation. The board's agreement would be more restrictive than that, but if you have a document and DEP has something in effect that limits the hours of operation more restrictive than what the board is allowed, the DEP order would also be controlling. So if there's something more restrictive, that is not superseded by the board's agreement.
I can leave copies for you. You can have these, but I hope that they are, have been notified of the changes and that they are made well aware of what's happening.
Just to clarify, there are no changes on anything for DEP. If there's something that DEP has ordered that's more restrictive, that would control.
When I refer to changes, I mean for residents. This is a big change for us, being told it's allowed to continue.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman Charles Sullivan, 40th and High Street. My first question to you is, why have people who have been involved and have been affected by this, especially if butters, not been given a voice in making a settlement agreement? I want to know why.
Yes, because, so this lawsuit has always been going on for a long time, right? There has been many public hearings and there has not been?
No.
Okay.
Why, why, my question is this, okay, it's plain and simple. Why were we not brought to the table?
You were not brought to the table, we thought it was a more efficient and better way to get this over, this finished.
More efficient? More efficient, please. Okay, you answered my question there. How are you gonna enforce this?
What, through our Board of Health agent?
No, no.
Building inspector?
No, 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 no. How are you going to get Excel to do what they agreed to?
So if they don't?
You're gonna have to take them back to court.
Excuse me, please. If they don't do what they are going to do, then we will not renew their next license, therefore, and we'll actually have a reason to deny that license. That's the point here. Right now, we're not working any kind of framework, right?
Exactly.
So we're building a framework to work within.
The agreement is also enforceable in court.
Right, exactly, George. Yes, it's in court and we could have taken this case, we're dropping this case, you're coming to an agreement, and then we're nowhere. We're nowhere because they're gonna go out, we, come on, be real, be real Trevor. Be real. They're not gonna, they're not gonna abide by this. They've never abide by any kind of agreement that they've had. And we're, so we're gonna be starting back again and your $250,000 that you're complaining about is gone.
So, so let's talk this out. So the other option would, we would have had a, you know, remand hearing, say if the board then denied their license, they would appeal that decision, we'd start off exactly where we are now. Except, we go back through the courts and they could easily find against us that we have no legal standing to shut them down. So then we have nothing. So this is the better of two pretty bad options.
There's the issue of zoning, original issue of zoning.
Yeah.
And that, and that case has never been forwarded and my understanding is that the town would have a very good foundation for their complaints. Just because a town issues you a permit or municipality issues you a permit does not mean that you, you can't, you have to just go by the permit. They can issue you a permit in which is incorrect and when it's all done, they, the courts can cause the construction to be demolished or whatever has to be. Clearly, in Tiverton, I know it's in Rhode Island, but in Tiverton, a year or so ago, that's exactly what happened, okay? And the other thing is this, I mean, I can't, I cannot understand, and I, and I think this is totally wrong, that no one has been, from the public, has been given any input. Because I'm telling you, I would never agree to something going from 7:00 to 9:00 and there's no reason why you should be agreeing to that.
It's not going from 7:00 to 9:00.
You, you, did you not just say that shredder can start at 7:00 and can go till 9:00?
No, that's the DEP standards. We are more restricted than that. The shredder has to stop at 5:30 PM.
Okay, even 5:30?
Currently, currently, right now, Charlie, if they want to, they can operate till 9:00 PM and they're not violating any rules. That's the current situation. So we are taking a step forward.
I don't agree that it was 9:30. My understanding, it's always been 5:00.
The original license was for 5:00, but then when we denied that, now they're operating with no license at all.
Right, and they're supposed to have a license.
All right, thank you.
It, it, it's just, from the beginning, it was, it was a year after the license was originally issued by a former Board of Selectment until anyone knew. There was no input. There's never been any input.
Okay. I was not there.
You're here today, you were sitting, you're here now and you, and you have not allowed anyone to have any input. The notice for this meeting, the only notice the town gave was to put it on the website of agendas and posting it. We have what was first, was first call. Did we get a first call? No. Yesterday, we get a first call about the change of hours at the transfer station, but not anything about this meeting.
I mean, this was all gonna be public, I mean, we posted the meeting in a legal fashion. I don't know what to tell you.
You don't, you don't know what to tell me?
We posted, we did everything by the procedure that we have to do it, so.
Oh, you have to do, but nothing else? Nothing for anybody?
I, I understand your frustration.
No, no, you understand my, no, you don't understand my frustration. What I'm saying, you could have put it on first call, you, you put it on the transfer hours yesterday, but you're not gonna do this.
I know what now.
Bill Maddow, 34 High Street. Walking in the back of my property and my neighbor's property, less than an hour, less than one hour, what are you gonna do if you have this blowing on your property?
Please do not put that on the table. Please, please.
It's blowing on my property every day, every day.
Come on Trevor, really?
Are you kidding me? What would you do?
First of all?
Do you have kids?
I do not have kids.
You have children?
I do not have kids.
What would you, how would you feel if this toxic material, see, look how big this is?
Do you know what this is?
What about, what's, what can't you see? This is what's white. How are they gonna comply? They can't comply. This is gonna continue to happen.
Sir, we're, first of all, we're talking about the, their license.
It's fine, it's fine. No, can I just, if I'm driving down the street, can I ask you something? If I'm driving down the street and I throw this out the window, what happens?
It's littering.
It's littering and what will you do? What will you do?
Excuse me, first of all, excuse me, address the board, address me?
What is the fine for this if I just throw this out my window? But it's okay for Excel to pollute the whole neighborhood?
It is not okay for Excel to pollute the whole neighborhood.
Then why do you guys allow it? Why does the, the health agent allow it? He was at my property, he witnessed it.
I very clearly stated that this is regarding simply their junk dealer's license, has nothing to do with any kind of health or environmental concerns.
Has nothing to do with health or environment? Come on, are you kidding me?
The settlement.
This settlement is regarding the pending fruitless litigation that we've had. This does not prevent the town from going after them for health or environmental issues. I mean.
Steve Tripp, 4 Alexander Drive. This is what I pick up out of my flower beds every, every day from Excel. And again, you never brought that to court. You never brought that to court about all the litter that's going on, right?
Because that has nothing to do with the court case that's, that's, that we're currently speaking about now.
But you could find this and get this evidence, okay? You didn't get, then, no, no evidence ever brought up against Excel.
Now?
And first of all, the residents on Alexander got the shaft the first time because they were never notified about Excel going in. And you turn around and pull this shady deal on one day's notice that, hey, we're gonna have a meeting on this and by the way, we've already negotiated the contract with them. So, so this is like a puppet show. It's like, hey, we've already settled it, but here you go. What's that? I mean, you didn't bother to call anybody over there? You didn't even bother to ask us if we wanted to put anything in this. You told us at the beginning when you got in, you know, you wanted to keep this a small town, you want to keep it nice for your kids to grow up like this. You don't bring something like this and keep this in town if you want to keep it for your kids.
I think that there's a misunderstanding. There's nothing we could do to shut them down. We, like, we were having pending litigation that's been going on for five, six years. There continues, the courts have shown that there's no willingness to actually shut them down.
Because you're not bringing any evidence. Have you done anything? Have you done any sound testing?
But the evidence, we're gonna bring evidence?
Have you relied in an outside contractor to come in to do sound testing? No.
We work with the DEP, the DEP is doing sound testing and they're currently doing it now.
You're gonna rely on the DEP, no. You're not doing it yourself. You didn't bother to do any, any air quality testing. You're gonna find air sensors now and you're gonna give them the license before you even get the sensor.
So unfortunately, there's not a lot of ways for us to actually get evidence that will be admissible in court. It's, it's, it's a difficult situation.
It's not true. You can put on an air sock or something to catch the particles coming through.
That's my understanding.
And how is this not like a shady deal when you turn around and sign this contract? You didn't let the new guy even get in on it. You wait until George got thrown out and then you threw?
First of all, George was a part of that decision. He was not on the board yet when, when, when this was voted on. First of all.
The date says the 40th, the first?
It was, it was on George's last meeting.
Oh, so you have George on the way out the door. Here, sign this.
I'm just, that's, this is what happened.
Yeah.
Right? So, and my thought was, it made more sense to get that done with three people who have been involved in all these executive sessions than to put that on a new selectman.
On the court, George, you didn't have even what was going on anymore. You were leading them through the whole thing as a slithers.
Are you serious?
You turn around, you get someone.
All right, but that's enough. Your three minutes are up. Thank you.
Yes. Unbelievable.
Leah, 87th and Street. Back to the stuff that Bill brought up, this debris, this isn't just litter. This isn't McDonald's, you know, Happy Meal toss out the window, okay? This is technically illegal disposal of hazardous waste.
Yes, okay.
Yes.
I will say, I will repeat myself once again. The lawsuit that we settled is regarding their junk dealer's license. It does not prevent the town or anybody else from going after them for any other reason. I don't know if I could be more clear about that.
Right.
So I'm, we're saying, I'm saying, if they are in fact, you know, putting this kind of debris all over the place, we will look into that, we will investigate that.
This is gonna happen. You're gonna give the license back and they're gonna do this tomorrow. And what are you gonna do? Are you gonna, but, but there's no condition on the license saying that you, no, no illegal disposal of hazardous waste. I mean, we're?
That is a part of their, of their air?
No, it's not.
I mean, it's a different issue, so if there's?
They are pursuant to 7.1, what is it, 02 of regulations and that is it. As a scrap recycling facility that's defined in match on the law, that's it and they get, and you guys give them a junk license.
Thank you.
No, I'm not done. The junk license, which is, you know, we've seen it, but has anyone actually looked at this? The selectmen may license such persons. Are you licensing Marty Costa? Or are you licensing Excel Recycling Scrap Recycling Facility?
Is that a serious question?
Yeah, it's a serious question. To keep, it's, it's being suitable to be dealers and keepers of shops for the purchase and sale of junk, disposing automobiles within the town. When was the last time that Turkey was a part of a summit or Free Town? Okay, within the town. This license means crap and Excel knows it. They have come out and they have said they don't need this license, it's meaningless. And if you think that they're gonna take you seriously and anything you put on this license, you are severely, severely and knowingly mistaken because the last time they had this license and you had hours of restrictions, they were in there operating at 3:00 in the morning, starting fires at midnight. So what are you gonna do when that happens again? You're gonna be in the same boat and you're gonna pull the license and they're gonna continue operating and then what are you gonna do? Have you considered hiring an independent environmental consultant to bring evidence to court that can say, you know what, they're right, you guys need to shut down? Have you thought of contacting the Attorney General's Office?
We have not contacted the Attorney General's Office.
Why not? You are having difficulty and you are being screwed over by Excel. So you seek additional help?
Thank you very much, your time is up. Please, you have another question.
Really? What's wrong with that?
Your tax pays.
I know it was the timer. Was it your timer?
We have?
I mean, this is, this is, this is just unconscionable.
Okay, that's.
Okay, okay. No, it's not okay.
Can I ask a question to Mr. Pucci?
Yes, please.
In the last few years, I've submitted several testimonies. I have written up multiple observations that have been used by the Board of Selectment in the past, multiple conversations with the Board of Health, discussions with multiple attorneys, consultants, people that might be able to help us with this situation. I've spoken with Beacon Hill. I've done quite a bit in collecting evidence that Mr. Tripp asked about. If we're collecting evidence every day and an hour, bags and bags full, is everything we've submitted and contributed to up to this date admissible for future discussion, conversation concern? Or are we starting over?
I'm, as to you, I'm not sure to answer that.
I mean, the best I can say to you is, it, you know, a lot of, a lot of what Ms. Aidi just said, kind of speaks in favor of this, of the settlement on the junk dealer's license because they have never treated it seriously. And unfortunately, every time you win a victory in court, whether or not the court upheld the denial of the renewal of the license, the court's been unwilling to shut them down. So what the board, I don't, I don't run this, I just do what the board, you know, votes and authorizes me to do and what the board thought about this matter and authorized me to do to engage in mediation with them was only the junk dealer's license. That the board looked at it from the perspective of, we've litigated with them all these years over the junk dealer's license and it's really gone nowhere and no matter what happens, they're, they're never ordered to cease and desist. You know, and the court found every excuse to not order them to cease and desist. So the way the board looked at it is, rather than having them continue to operate with no restrictions in terms of the junk dealer's license, at least try to negotiate something that's favorable to the town, that would be enforceable for those issues covered by the junk dealer's license. All these other issues, the environmental contamination, all of that, is not, there's not an endpoint because of the settlement of the junk dealer's license dispute. So if there is evidence of ongoing contamination, issues like that, they can be brought up with the health agent, they can be brought up individually in claims against Excel. There's a multitude of ways of pursuing that, but this settlement of the junk dealer's license dispute in no way covers that. So, so all of that is still, you know, those are issues that remain, you're free to petition the board, you know, to hire an environmental expert, whatever it is that takes, but, and yeah, you would be free to do that. The town has not given up any rights with respect to environmental contamination if they want to hire an expert, if they want to try to document something and, you know, pursue that, you're entirely free to do that. Private parties are also entirely free to, you know, assert claims against Excel, report it to the AG, whatever it is that they, they want to do. But, so it's very limited what the board attempted to achieve here with the junk dealer's license. And I, you know, I totally get the concern. We don't appreciate putting the bag up on the table tonight, but it's serious.
It's all in my yard every day.
Hey, excuse me.
I wouldn't want it in my yard.
It's in the back, relax.
I wouldn't, I wouldn't want it in my yard either. We're not, nobody's trying to minimize the concern about that. Who would, who would want that? But those are evidentiary issues that the, you know, if the? But those are evidentiary issues that the, you know, if the board decides that they want to hire an, an expert based on what you're complaining about, they can go ahead and do that and pursue it.
You don't have to be an expert. You don't have to be an expert. You don't need to be-
Okay.
I'm, I'm just saying, all, any type of environmental contamination, health hazards, anything like that is, is not settled as a result of this settlement of the junk dealer's case. That's all I'm saying.
The other one is that-
You only, only speak if you come up to the microphone, please. Thank you.
One of the items on the settlement was that the hotline maintained by Excel would actually, it sounds like they will be communicating or discussing something with the Board of Selectmen. Um, we have found in the past that hasn't helped much when we do have complaints moving forward, and we don't see a response or responses are negated. Do we come to the board?
Yeah, yeah, so I understand that, and that's, we discussed this a lot, right? The issue being, you know, we'd like to man the, the twenty-four hour hotline ourselves. But the problem is, we don't have in-town employees that are available twenty-four hour, twenty-four hours a day to take those calls and to record them and be responsible for those. So, eh, a part of the agreement, Excel is supposed to do this, and if they don't do that, we'll hold them accountable for that. That'll be a violation of their license agreement.
So we submit, when we see violations of this agreement, submit them to the board?
Through, yeah, through the town administrator, submit them, and, and then, uh, you can file those away and, you know, keep those as evidence. Thank you.
Hi, Shirley Fisk, I'm on thirty-nine High Street. Um, I came in a few minutes late, so I apologize if this might have been addressed. Uh, also, this is my first time in a meeting like this, so I'm very new to this whole situation. Um, it has been, uh, in Somerset, I guess they had a similar metal recycling plant or a facility. Um, that has been ordered to be shut down. Is there a reason why they got shut down, but we can't shut down Excel?
Yeah, they're very different cases, and I think Attorney Pucci can explain some of the main differences there.
Yeah, they're very different cases. That, that was not a recycling operation. It was a scrap metal, uh, facility that was used as like a transport depot. So scrap metal would be dumped there, then loaded onto ships for overseas transport. And they, they were operating under a permit, uh, that had like a no-dust standard, um, in Somerset. What would happen there is, um, dust would, uh, go into the air, and this, the neighborhood in Brayton Point was downwind of this facility. And, and so there was documented evidence of violation of the condition in the permit, which was the no-dust standard. The court interpreted it to be a-
Can we get that for Excel? Why can't we get that for Excel? I live on High Street, I'm right there next to them. I have small children who are here, a two-year-old. He sees something on the ground, he picks it up, or they're outside playing, and these toxins are going into their bodies. What's the long-term effect that gonna be on my children?
I, I, I was just trying to describe the difference between that, so that was in court.
I understand, like, why did they get the air permit, but Excel, we can't get that against them? It's the same kind of, it's so polluted air, highly polluted air.
I'm telling you what the Somerset case was about. It was about violation of a permit condition. Excel has an air permit with nasty E P, which is being violated or not. Uh, they also have a junk dealer's license with the town. So the town resolved this junk dealer's license issue because it was unsuccessful over these several years in shutting them down under that limited, the limited power of the statute. But issues like you're talking about, about environmental contamination and concern over your kid's health, are not covered by this settlement. Those would be different issues to be pursued, either with the health agent or the town.
I understand this is, this is a different situation. I, I, like I said, I'm new to this. I've only lived in a summit for less than two years, so I'm not with a lot of the other residents here that they've tracked all this since it began. Um, so maybe I'm ignorant to some things, but it seems like that's something that should also be addressed.
Yeah, it's something, it's a decision for the board to make. I'm just trying to tell you the distinction between it. But this settlement is not, does not, like, excuse Excel or anything like that or resolve those issues if there are issues concerning health, uh, concerns or environmental concerns. Those are independent of this settlement. This is only to do with the junk dealer's license.
Yes.
I have a question. How is, how is this different than a hearing that would have taken place before a vote on the license?
How is this different than a hearing?
Right. I mean, I was under the impression there was gonna be no public comment tonight, that you were gonna announce this, this agreement, and then that was gonna be it, but here we are, you know, doing this all over again, and I don't understand why, because according to the bylaw, like, how do you, how do you condition out a, a bylaw? Or how, how do you make that a condition of, of, of settlement? It's to, to wipe out a bylaw? I mean, the bylaw requires, and that, did you walk the facility before you made this agreement?
I didn't, I did not walk the facility.
Because on the, in the bylaw, you are required, as the licensing authority, to walk, or an agent of, that you're supposed to walk the facility and, and take a look around to make sure that everything is kosher, right? And then you're also supposed to hold a public hearing and take comment according to the junk license bylaw. So I, we feel like we're really getting sushat.
There was a remand hearing that was demanded by the Court of Appeals, right?
Right, which didn't take much.
So, so the, the option, we also had the option to deal, deal with this through a, through, you know, um, executive session and, or support looking for, through mediation. That's the route that the board decided to go.
And, and that includes just not deliberating, not taking public comment, not going through the public hearing process, not going through, not, not following the bylaw, and issuance, because this is an annual thing, so, and, and the, the court order originally was to do a remand hea- hearing, right? And I would assume that would also include a walk through the facility to make sure that everything is, you know, to your standard and, and, and vote. So I don't understand how thi- this, this is okay.
This was to settle the lawsuit, the pending lawsuits?
I understand why, but I don't understand the, the procedure that, that was followed in the agreement, the settlement outside of a public hearing. I don't understand how that, I mean, George, can you answer that? Is, I don't, I honestly don't get it.
There are conditions that they have to comply with, and if they comply with them, then it's, you know, a reasonable grounds to issue the license. So, you know, if, if somebody thinks that they, if somebody thinks the agreement is illegal, they're free to challenge it. And they, they, the board negotiated the agreement with Excel. The agreement speaks for itself. It's been endorsed by the, just let me finish.
Yeah.
It's been endorsed by the Superior Court, uh, the same judge that heard the case off and on over the years. So it was, um, endorsed and approved by the, approved by the court. So the court apparently finds it legal. But it's America. If somebody thinks it's illegal for the board to have done what it did, that is beyond the scope of authority under the statute. They're free to challenge it.
Was the judge aware of what the bylaw requires as far as issuing the license? And, and requiring a, a walk-through of the site, and, I mean, this is, this is a public health thing. This is why this is so important, because, I mean, walk through the site, you know, see what's going on over there, and, and then, you know, have a public hearing and take perhaps new testimony. I didn't come prepared tonight to say anything. I mean, we all were under the impression, Jed Petty, I believe you spoke to Jed Fisk this morning, and you told him there would be no public comment.
I wasn't, I wasn't sure at that point because of the threats.
If you were unsure, then why were you so sure of him?
I did not tell him that there would be no. I said, based on the threats that we had received.
Based on what?
The threats that we had received, we might not.
What threats? You received threats?
I think, if anyone should know about the threats, you should.
Excuse, wow, okay.
Yes.
Please, what threats?
I'm not gonna get into it. Um, but-
I, no, I wanna know.
I am.
What I said that was so threatening to you.
Okay, thank you for your time. I appreciate it. Um, I'm gonna intro, intro-
You're threatening the health of these people every, I just-
I'll introduce a motion to adjourn.
A second.
A second. All in favor?
Aye.